To the New Market zoning board of adjustment, a couple of housekeeping things were virtual. So anyone wishing to attend the meeting in person at the town hall is welcome to attend. We're maintaining social distancing. You have to have a mask on. If you want to attend by telephone, the board will be using Zoom. Using the following information to join the meeting. Call the number, this number, one six four six five five eight eight six five six. The meeting ID code is nine two two seven four five seven nine four two one. And if you have any problems with that, call six oh three six five nine three six one seven, extension thirteen twenty one. All of this information is on the legal notice for the meeting. So you can call that up and take a look at it. With that, let's start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Okay. The agenda shows that we're going to review and approve minutes, but we don't have anything published yet, so we will, and I haven't had a chance to review it. So I'll entertain a motion to table that for this meeting and address it at the next meeting.
We have the minutes from the 28th, I believe.
I didn't.
They were on the agenda. That's online.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see them. Do you?
They're there. If you go to the online agenda, you can pull them up on the screen if you so desire.
Motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Okay. Who made that motion and who seconded it, please?
Al made the motion and Wayne seconded it. All those in favor, we have to do a roll call, so Al.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
And it's an aye from me, so we'll take it up in the next meeting. Okay, with that, we're going to go over to the regular business. This is the request for relief from James Jeffrey and Rachel Eames of the Eames Family Revocable Trust of 2020. It's a continuation of a public hearing for an application for variance, reference sections thirty-two dash eighty-six residential density, thirty-two dash forty-seven M3 zone, and thirty-two dash fifty-six table of permitted uses of the New Market zoning ordinance requested by Jeffrey and Rachel Eames, Eames Family Revocable Trust of 2020 to permit the conversion of a portion of the current first floor 1,210 square foot commercial office space to a 1,100 square foot residential apartment. The property is located at 95 South Main Street, tax map U4, lot 27, zone, the M3 zone. And with that, I turn it over to Rachel. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you and thank you. So good evening, everyone. Glad the audio is working. So succinctly put, what you just read is what we're requesting. We're looking to divide the space. I would use that is existing on the first floor. We're not adding anything. We're not taking anything away, per se. We're literally dividing off a small office space, and I believe I gave those square footages approximately on this plan, which I think this time you should have in your packet. And thank you, Diane. I appreciate that. So it's currently 1,210 square feet. We wouldn't be changing any of that space. We wouldn't be changing the layout of that space. We're proposing an office space of 110 approximate square feet and a residential apartment for the 1,100. And if you look at that drawing, on the far left, you will see where it says current entry. And that wall that says current wall right beyond it is existing. We would basically be making an L-shaped wall to wall off some office space and a door into that space, a door into the remainder of the space that would remain unchanged, that would be an apartment.
Now, you've read the five different conditions for granting a variance. Address any of those with us?
The five criterion, I believe we did go through. Certainly can, can address them. They were, they were in the application.
If you want to elaborate on any of them, we could have been tested.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
If you want to elaborate on any of them, now would be the time.
Okay, and I, and I will do that. So basically, the building is, you know, extremely well-kept. We have renovated that building, kind of took, took it over, so to speak, from John and Lynn Sweet Perkins. They had done a very, very nice job inside. I kind of completed those interior renovations by putting in hardwood floor and, and kind of sprucing things up a little bit. And then we did a very nice job, I think, of keeping the character of the building by reciting it. It was, it was needy, I think is a nice way to put it. It was kind of an eyesore in the neighborhood. And we did the reciting and even kept the motif, so to speak, the very pretty decorations of the age of the property. And Mike Grassi did all that work for us and it is just very nicely kept. The ramp is in great condition. We keep the lawn in excellent condition. It's a nice property. Parking lot is paved. It has, I think is how I'd put it. And so if I look at the neighboring buildings, I'm going to say our building is in as good shape, if not slightly better, than some of them, because of course, we've just done all this work in the last couple of years, so it's in great condition. We are surrounded, literally, by houses in the M3 zone that have multiple apartments in them. I do have some addresses that I can share that do not meet the requirements either of the zoning ordinance. As we all know, housing in the state of New Hampshire, and especially the seacoast area of New Hampshire, is wildly needed. And this apartment is extremely nice. It's not going to be an apartment that, you know, it's not going to be housing for students, I guess is how I'm going to look at it. I am an insurance agent, and there are certain things that are allowed by our insurance and certain things that aren't. So it will be well-presented, well-taken care of. Plus, we'll still be on site, which I think that's important to note, that we will still be on site. And it's important for us owning a business that we want the building not only to appear well-kept, but well, well-broomed and pride of ownership. So if I look at some of my immediate neighbors, I will mention 193 South Main Street. That is directly next to us, heading towards downtown, if that makes any sense. That is a six-unit building. They are on point four eight of an acre, so double the amount of land with six units in it. They have 12 parking spaces, so two per unit, if you'd like to look at it that way. But they have no handicapped units. And we do have a handicap unit to make sure that we could accommodate somebody with a disability. And we have a nice ramp for people to be able to get into the first floor. I take a lot of pride in that. So if I was to break that point four eight of an acre down per six units, basically per unit is point oh eight of an acre and two spaces each. Another one that is noteworthy, again, right there next to us, 198 South Main Street, M3. They're on point one nine of an acre. They actually have less land than we do. And they have three apartments in that building. So again, if I was to break down units per the amount of acreage, it's point oh six acre per unit. And just to mention a third, 200 South Main Street is in the M3 zone. That's point one eight of an acre, and that's a two-family, two units. And so that'd be point oh nine of an acre. I'm surrounded by buildings that have multiple apartments in them that don't meet the zoning requirement. And in actuality, we would, compared to the others, actually have more land and better parking, if you want to put it that way, than the ones that are currently surrounding me. And Rick, you know, I think it's important to realize that granting this variance wouldn't alter the character of my neighborhood at all. If anything, we've done, I think, an excellent job in putting that building back to a very nice-looking building. We took pride in doing that, so I don't think it alters the public health or safety of the residents of New Market. And, you know, for, for those reasons, granting it would, would be of no hardship, I guess is how I'd look at it. I don't know what else you might like me to address, but I'm happy to address anything else that you might have specific questions regarding.
I, I, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more on what the hardship criteria for making this necessary. What's specific about the property or the location that makes the hardship for the parcel to meet?
Well, the hardship is one that's not just going to hit the town of New Market. It's going to hit the entire state, so to speak. And that is, is that commercial brick and mortar, you know, is, is going to be a difficult situation with the current environment. As we all know, COVID has hit, and people are working from home. We are attending meetings from home. And it's not just the applicants, but tonight, we actually have two board members attending from home, which I think is great. But the reality is, is that brick and mortar for commercial use is going to be very difficult to keep filled and occupied. And with employees working from home and taxes going up, trying to keep a building that is well-maintained and well-furbished, so to speak, is going to be more difficult for owners everywhere. And I am a Realtor. I am an insurance agent. I've been doing my two disciplines for over 30 years. The writing is on the wall for small commercial buildings. Quite frankly, it's on the wall for the large ones as well. It's just going to take a little longer for it to hit. And we think it's prudent to be able to offer an apartment in the town, like many others around me, that would allow people to have a nice place. Would be still a very well-maintained building, because our name would still be on it, obviously, if our place of business is there. It's important to us how the building is maintained and how the building is regarded. And that keeps the building looking nice, keeps the taxes paid, and things moving forward. And that hardship is not just in the town of New Market. It's in every town in the state right now.
I fully appreciate what you're saying. The, and what I'm hearing is that it's economically, it's not viable to maintain that large a footprint for a job that can be done in a much smaller space, and you want to convert that into something more rental-worthy, more economical for the, for the whole, whole business. Is that correct?
I would say that's partially correct, other than, I know there's not enough housing in the seacoast area. There's, I mean, just pick up any, any news journal, any online blog, anything you want.
What we're looking for is.
And so it behooves the town not to have good housing for, for the residents. Then, you know, well-maintained, well-put-together, something that is nice-looking. So yes, I mean, that is correct. Other than, it also fills a need, a void. There is a need for, you know, you can live in an apartment and ask yourself, you know, do you want to live in an apartment building that has 24 units in it? Or would you prefer to live in a nice house like that, that has a yard and you're, you're, you're not inundated with people on all sides and top and bottom of you? That's a much better fit for most, most people. And, and the reality is that, actually Harvard University did a study that, you know, multifamilies typically are occupied by either single people, people who no longer have children, in other words, empty nesters, or people who aren't going to have children. So especially in a building like that, because it's not a low, low-rent area, that's for sure. And in actuality, multi-unit buildings attract a different clientele than you might find otherwise. So something else to consider.
Yes. I know, I'm going to open her up to the public real quick, see if there's anybody. Is there anybody out there in TV land that wants to comment on this application? Now is your time. I'm not seeing anybody up on the screen. So with that, I'll adjourn the public comment portion of this discussion amongst the board. Now is your time to ask questions of Rachel. Not let me do all the talking.
I guess my question is more of a question for Diane. I can't remember in my reading in preparing to review this, but I believe I had read something, listen to me. I believe I had read something that a number of years ago, this house was converted from a single-family home to a business and family home.
Yes, it was, actually, it was in 2015. It was originally a single-family home, and this was before the Perkins purchased the property.
Right.
And they purchased it with the intent of putting the insurance office on the bottom floor. And they did come forward and they went to the planning board, because mixed-use development is allowed in that zone, but it is subject to site plan review. And prior to this point, there were really no amenities on the site, per se, for commercial business. And they, a professional engineer who worked with the homeowner or the property owner, and they did an excellent job, quite frankly, in laying out the parking lot and providing the handicap access. Also, there's a handicap space. And they actually put in a drainage system, a stormwater system, a rain garden that's in the back of the property. And I would say it's a really good example of infill development and how it can be done with limited space, but still meet the town's requirements for stormwater management. So yes, they did come to the planning board and they did get approval. But in doing so, because the property hasn't been used strictly for residential for a period of two years, they've lost the original vesting. So that's really why Rachel is here before us tonight, is to go back and say, hey, I want to put the lower floor, part of the lower floor, back into residential use.
It was, and again, I don't have my reference, but as I recall, there was some requirement after the building was turned into residential for business within a certain period of time to change that.
It's, it's in the town zoning ordinance, hell. It says two years. So if you, after two years, you lose that vesting.
So.
That's right in the town zoning ordinance. And we changed it to accommodate a situation like this.
So I guess my question, because I'm brand new at this, is, is there any implication regarding the change in use subsequent to that two-year period?
Actually, I think this is a perfectly viable use. And as part of my review of this before I prepared my letter, which I think you all have a copy of, I did go back and I revisited the planning board approval. And the proposed mixed-use development, as Rachel has proposed it, meets the current town regulations for stormwater, for parking, and access, handicap access. So basically, they're not required to go back for further review by the planning board, since they did such a good job with the first iteration of the plan.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that out. And really, I, I think it's a good example of how you can do an infill without having negative impacts on your neighbors.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah. I was thrilled with the project when it came out. I mean, it was, everything went very, and we did get buy-off from the state. Department of Transportation, they weighed in because they had to get a driveway permit approved by the state. And they did make some modifications to the plan so they have a one-way circuit that would provide utmost safety. We had the highway engineer from the state down. And I think at the end of the day, it was a win-win for all.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Steve, James, well?
Diane, why does, why does the applicant need a variance from the table of permitted uses? Mixed use is allowed in the M3 zone, right?
Right, but they have two units. They're not allowed to have two units. And there's two reasons for that, Steve. Okay, if you look at the table of permitted use, if you can only have a single family in that zone. And the other part of it has to do with the second reason why they need a variance. And that is, currently, the lot does not meet the residential density requirement. And I don't have all the information in front of me, but in my letter, I think I've identified what the acreage is. So in addition to having a use variance, because they're having two units in a mixed use, okay? They also need to have a density unit variance to be able to meet the letter of the law with respect to those requirements.
To be perfectly clear, what's going to happen is if we do this, they're going to have three units there, correct?
Well, there's only a small space left. Rachel, it's what, 500 square feet?
Doesn't matter. It's a separate entity and it's not in the old.
I certainly think it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. We have a lot of actually higher-density multifamily units in that section. And I really think that it's compatible with, with what's there currently. That would be my personal opinion on that.
Please, I'd like to comment and then make a proposal.
Did you get one pointed over?
Okay. I'm thoroughly familiar with previous development of this property. It was done right, but Diane said it was a bit bad and the storm drainage has been taken care of.
I'm starting to lose you. I can't hear you, Wayne. I'm sorry.
I'm saying that it was done right in 2014, 15.
Correct.
The job was done right. The storm drainage has been taken care of. Is that the parking for this? It certainly fits the character. I mean, the same things went through a few, but I can think that there's two or three more multi-unit apartment buildings within three or 400 feet. So it certainly fits the character of the neighborhood. I, I have no problem with this.
Wayne, can you pull the mic closer? We can't hear you.
I think it's a good, is that better?
Yeah. It's, it's muffled again. Tim?
He went back, I think, to try and, he went back to try and boost the sound.
Okay. Now we can hear him. Maybe I'll turn mine off. How's that?
I think it's certainly, maybe I'll speak louder. Is that better?
No. Do you have a good shaking hand?
I'm saying good things there. I think, I think that, I have no problem with this application. And I, I think it's a good use, and it should be approved.
Okay, the, the, I'm, I'm going specifically, I was hoping for a little bit more addressing criteria on five, which is the unnecessary hardship. And I'm going to read it just to make it clear, only to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area.
Application.
Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because there's no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public's purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of that provision to the property. If you could just take a little time to say, explain what makes this unique and not, I mean, I know the economy is bad all over the place, but what is it that's specific about this property that, that makes this the right, the right use for it?
So I, I think I heard most of that. I apologize. Some of it was muffled. What makes it a suitable use is, I think, going back to what Diane said, that I'm, I'm sitting amongst other buildings that are basically doing the same thing in a, in a mixed-use zone. We're just trying to make the building viable for the future. Again, it doesn't mean that we might change it the next day or a year from now, but we want to know that we, we can. And it, and it is a better use for the building. I mean, I think, I think, as I said in criteria number five, which is one you're looking for me to address, the zoning ordinance, as applied to this particular property, and actually, all of the properties that have already been granted this use by just the three I went through, there's many others. I just chose three that were literally concentric around my building. It interferes with the reasonable use of the property. These were all residences before, as we know, they changed it when Lynn and John purchased it. It, it's, it lends itself very nicely to the use that we're looking for. And considering the environment we're in, the neighborhood we're in, where the property exists, the variance doesn't hinder anyone in my neighborhood. It, it doesn't injure the, the public. It doesn't injure my, my neighbor's values. If anything, what we've done to the building, and when I say we, I'm going to say the Perkins and the Eames. We have brought that building so that it's not an eyesore anymore. It was an eyesore. So we've more than helped the neighborhood when, when, you know, you look at market value or whatever. neighborhood when, you know, you look at market value or whatever. It's justified that the hardship is that I'm sitting around doing this. I actually have more land per unit than what others have, and we're just looking to proceed with what we feel is a very reasonable request for the use of the building.
So, I agree with 100% with you that it's a very good proposal. It's just that the, with the nature of the criteria, we've got to develop it in a manner that addresses the unique aspects of the property that are causing the hardship. And it sounds to me like what you're saying is that you're nestled in a, in an area where you've got numerous multifamily homes around you and you're looking to address, get basically parity compared to them.
Well, not really, I mean, I guess you could say that, but I mean, quite frankly, I'm really not looking to do, because my neighbors have, I'm looking to do what makes most sense for this building. And yes, the neighborhood, I am surrounded, surrounded by properties in the same zone that have considerably more units. I mean, if I look at the one, quite frankly, right next door with six units on .48 of an acre, my request is extremely reasonable if I look at that as comparison. But I don't begrudge that they have six units in that building right next to it. That building looking very nice as well. As a matter of fact, that building was sold about a year and a half ago. We have a nice relationship between the two of us. But my point is, this doesn't, this doesn't, the request to change this use does no harm to the greater good. And in my opinion, actually does considerably aids the town by being able to do this. This would be a lovely, is a lovely building. I'm not asking for anything that is not warranted by what's there.
Does it?
I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Al.
I'm a bit intrigued by your earlier comment. Again, I'm new at this, so please take it forward to work. But your comment about three uses, two residential uses and an office.
Correct.
Does that open the door to similar considerations? Is that something the ZDA should be concerned about?
My understanding is that precedent doesn't play that much of a role in there. It's certainly got a minor element, but that's what we've got to consider. That's what the zoning ordinance does. It establishes a common basis for similar areas like that. So, what the precedent to be set here is that you could have, you know, an apartment building next door that's got four units in it. They could carve out a little niche in it, say that's an office space. And, you know, we've opened up Pandora's Box. This is, you know, a very, very good use of the space, I think, and I'm not begrudging that. It's just I've got to make sure that we're, we're looking specifically at the unique aspects of the property that make that the best. And basically, what I'm understanding to some extent is that the, the size of the space, they don't need all that space to do it. So, it's basically underutilized and they're looking to make the space, utilize the space more efficiently and better, given that, given that building.
Right.
So, I think it's a great idea and a great concept. And I'm not averse to it, but I'm looking to better develop the hardship side of things. And I think we've danced around it. And I think we're all in agreement that it's a good, good use of the property. With that being said, Wayne?
I don't think we're setting a precedent, if that's what your question is. I don't think we're doing a bad thing by approving something like this. No, is that what your question is?
Yeah, again, I'm new, so it's probably not even a question.
Yeah. And we, we, Bob and I have both been on this board for 10 years and we really do, I think you'll agree with me, we take each individual case, case by case. So, I don't think we have a problem there.
And again, the key to working on this is to focus on the unique aspects of the property that make this the right choice for that property. And, you know, I think we've all danced around it. I think it's a good use for the property. So...
I would agree.
I'll entertain a motion from, did Steve blank out on us or just shut his camera off? Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Dagel, can I make a comment?
Yes.
One of the things that strikes me personally as being unique about this piece of property is it is already, it meets the town's site review regulations for a mixed-use development. It is a fully designed and engineered site. There's a parking lot that meets the town's regulations. There's a stormwater system that meets the town's regulations. And this conversion of use was easy because the facilities and the amenities are already there. And many of the other sites in that neighborhood do not have developed parking areas. And we have residents who in the past have sort of shoehorned in, if you will, parking spaces that don't actually work that well in some instances. So, to me, as a planner, the uniqueness of this tract is it is a ready-made tract that's designed and meets the town's regulations. And because of that, to not allow it to be used for a reasonable mixed-use development would be a hardship, a physical hardship due to the physical design features of the site.
Thank you, Diane.
Which I do. I applaud the developer for doing a great job in the past. And I guess that will be my comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, for stating what I was trying to get at.
You did a nice job, Diane.
Thank you.
Well done.
Is there anyone else that's got any comments? With that, one thing, piece of business, I forgot to do right at the beginning. I'm appointing Al Zink as the alternate to sit on the board and ask... Sorry about that. I'll entertain a motion on the... Wayne?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Eames Family Reconcilable Trust application of variance for section 3286, residential density 3247 M3 zone, and 3256 table of permitted uses of the zoning, New Market zoning ordinance.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, we've got to do a roll call on that. Al?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So, the ayes have it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Diane.
Okay, with that being said, we'll go to the second item on the agenda for tonight, which is a request by Jason and Sarah Mansfield. Their, I've got the wrong sheet. Hang on. My computer went to sleep on me. Yeah. There will be a continuation of the public hearing for an application for variance referenced section 32-87 setbacks and 32-89 dimensions table of the New Market zoning ordinance requested by Jason and Sarah Mansfield to permit the construction of a single-car garage five feet from the side property line abutting 30 Lady Slipper Drive, where 10 feet is required, and five feet from the rear property line abutting Sewell Farm Open Space Lift Station, where 30 feet is required. The property is located at 32 Lady Slipper Drive, tax map R4, Lot 36, R2 Zone. Okay, who have we got speaking to this? Is the, is Mr.?
Hello.
The Mansfield, there they are.
Yes, hello everyone. Mansfield, I trust you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. Okay. So, what I'd like to do real quickly, because the last time that we initially met was on September 28th, and then we met the following week when we had technical trouble and we couldn't hear each other. So, at the last meeting that I attended, the board requested to get some more photos and information to sort of better describe the situation. So, I have that up on the screen. I don't know if you can see that, but I have some slides I can, I can roll through. Because there, when I submitted this information last, I think it was before last week's, or the previous meeting, which was two weeks ago, I had, I added some new information and some new consideration that I think would have a less, less significant impact. I believe at the last meeting I attended, I believe one of the board members, I think it was Jim, who had asked, and here's the original proposal, I was looking to put a garage in the back corner of my lot. And there were some initial questions, why it wasn't closer to the street. And initially, I didn't consider that as strongly because I thought there'd be more impacts with 30-foot offset over here and other things. But after we had that initial meeting, I gave that some more thought. And what Jim had mentioned was actually a pretty good idea. So, and I'll just skip ahead to the, this current slide, because at the last meeting, the last meeting I attended, everyone wanted to see a better idea of what we were proposing. So, right here is just simply a Google Maps slide that shows the, shows the property as it stands right now, with some, with some markers there for information. Existing shed back here, currently about 54 feet from the back of the deck, existing deck to the property line, and about 27 feet from this fire hydrant, which we'll discuss in a few moments. This slide also shows the current 30-foot offsets that I'm required to have for the back property, 30 feet, and also adjacent to the side over here is 30-foot offset. So, the revised proposal would be to move, move the garage away from my original proposal where the existing shed is and actually move it closer to the Lady Slipper Drive street here. And the biggest impact to that change would be, the only really offset I'm looking to gather would be off this lift station property. I'm no longer affected that 30 Lady Slipper property. I'm no longer affecting the open space. And so, I'm just affecting the Sewell Farms property there. So, I felt that would be a reasonable request. It has less impact than the original proposal overall. Okay? And as, as requested before, you may have this information in front of you, but I just wanted to sort of share some photos of the existing house and garage. One of the main questions that I expect to have to discuss is why not just add another single-car garage onto this, onto this side of the house here? And first off, that's certainly not impossible to do. There's, there is, we would have to encroach on the 30-foot offset, probably maybe up two to three feet, because building it out like an equal-sized garage would encroach upon that. So, there would be a variance required. And this is where it would go. Basically, the water, the water main line that feeds the house is, it goes right along this range right here. I don't think there'll be any impact to that. The, the big, you know, the big issue, and you can consider it a possible hardship, maybe, maybe, maybe a partial hardship, is the enormity of cost to build, tie in another garage, and build a wider driveway on this side of the property. It's in compare, in comparison to what I'm proposing to do, a project like this, according to my, my contractor, would be maybe three or four times the cost than, than the current proposal. Large amount of money will have to be spent to expand the driveway, bring up the elevation in grade to match the existing elevation, and then all the landscaping removal requirements to fill, and then tie it into the existing house. So, that's where, where I sort of, why I started considering this as an option back here, simply because I'd prefer to put it attached to the house. But however, I think that's, the cost that would require, I would probably never get that back in terms of pound value. Okay, so here's some more photos that you may have. Here's a photo of the existing property pen that's behind the house. And here's, here's sort of a rough estimate of where the property line ends. Here's the lift station building. And this is the property line here, and there's some trees here. And this is the view in the opposite direction. And this sort of, I simulated with one of my vehicles, I parking in approximate vicinity of where the lead-in of the one-car garage was. Just for point of reference, the front wheels are probably in line with that 30-foot offset. Okay? So, this is, this is the actual close-up of the proposal, rough sketches again. The idea would be to request a five-foot variance, a five-foot offset for the lift station property. And this line represents here the existing offset. We would not impact that existing offset there. And then, as, 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 you know, as we get into the criterias, criteriums and such, you know, I think the topic of this existing fire hydrant, which was, which is on the property currently, we'll, we'll come into discussion. Obviously, if I tried to push, build a garage that was within that offset, it would certainly interfere with the line of sight or the path of the existing fire hydrant. So, that's sort of where the five-foot West came from, as a sensible solution to keep, keep the garage, you know, far enough away from that existing fire hydrant. So, since then, you know, as, as mentioned, I think, by Diane and some board members, that I needed to talk with Rick Malaski and ask some specific questions, what his opinion of the, of the issue, of... Because his, his, his input is going to have, obviously, significant value to the decision of the zoning board. So, he initially did a drive-by a few weeks ago, and he had the same questions, you know, that I think a lot of you may have. And then I asked, I asked, I went back to Rick and I asked him very specific, pointed questions about the fire hydrant here. And so, he actually stopped, stopped over this morning, actually. He was, he was coming to work. He said, I'll come over and we'll chat. And so, his basic recommendation initially, he says, you know, he's concerned about the location of the fire hydrant, you know, approximately to where the, I guess, the driveway or the entrance point to the, to the garage would be. He would have some concern and he would like to see that relocated, if possible, which, you know, I started asking questions. And I'm not opposed to, you know, incurring some cost for that, to do that correctly. But he also brought up some interesting points about this fire hydrant specifically. He was very shocked to see that this fire hydrant was installed with this much pipe sticking out of the ground. He says, you know, that, that was not done correctly. That should be flush with the ground. The event, it's, you know, it should be designed that way. Obviously, if something ever hit it, the top part is meant to break away. There's really no other way to shut off unless you go to the, I guess, you have to go to the shut-off anyway. But that, that was a, that was a concern with him. And he felt that that should be corrected. So, and so, that's just a general summary I have from my, my meeting with the fire chief. You know, he basically said, you know, that I have concerns about the fire hydrant. I think it should be relocated. But as he saw this, he's like, this is, this is not installed correctly. And he also feels it should be closer to the roadside as opposed to the property. So, that's sort of the, the general summary of information that I wanted to share with you during the previous meeting where we had technical trouble. Does anyone have any specific questions about these, these photos? Or if you'd like me to go back to review something, I'd be happy to do that now.
Did, did Rick have any specific recommendations? Did he say that, you know, he was going to require you to relocate it or for a driveway permit?
He didn't use the, the word require, but he says, well, he, he... He didn't use the word "require," but he says, well, he said, you know, he felt his opinion, which I value, is that it should be moved maybe six to ten feet in the northern direction of where the driveway, just to further mitigate the risk of, you know, something coming in contact with it. And really where it is now, I think it's a low risk. But I think in order to satisfy the standards that the fire chief says, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to have it relocated at some cost of my own. I don't know what that cost is. But it sounds like it needs to be corrected in terms of the height regardless. So, that's something that I think, you know, maybe for a continuing discussion, we'll have to sort of hammer that out a little more detail. But, you know, he did say, he didn't show up and say, "Yeah, it's fine where it is, don't worry about it." He said, "No, I'm concerned about it." And so, I took some value to that, and then I think it should be relocated in order to, again, mitigate the potential risk.
As a matter of course, before we really start discussing this, I'm going to open the meeting up to the public. If there's anybody out there that wants to speak to this, let us know. Raise your hand. Do whatever you've got to do to be heard. Is there anybody out there? It doesn't seem to be. With that, the public session, unless somebody pops up, in which case we'll give them their chance to speak. I'll open it up to the board to discuss it. Does anybody have... Go ahead, Wayne.
I may have missed it, because I'm having trouble hearing you. But did Rick say that he would approve a driveway in that location?
He didn't say, he basically, he didn't say anything yes or no about a driveway. He basically left it up to the zoning board, as my understanding to make that decision.
Well, that's not a...
Mr. Chairman, may I bring some light to this?
Can we get that volume up?
Hang on Diane, we're going to turn your volume...
I had conversations with Rick. Can you hear me now?
He's going to turn your volume up, just a whisper, okay?
Thank you.
Got it.
Rick has jurisdiction regarding this. Number one, he is the Public Works Director. And as the Public Works Director, he approves all driveway access permits for the town. So, if there is a hydrant in the way of a driveway, and Rick feels that it's an encumbrance and should be moved, Rick has the authority.
Diane, can you get a little closer to your microphone?
Yes, can you hear me better now?
A little better.
Okay, so Rick, as the Public Works Director, has jurisdiction over driveway permits. And if a way of a driveway that is being proposed, he has full authority to require that the hydrant be moved. In addition to that, Rick is our fire chief, and as you all know, the fire chief has full authority to request that a hydrant be relocated as part of the town function. And I think, I did get here back from Rick, and he was very clear with me, and I haven't received any follow-up correspondence, but he was very clear to me that it had to be moved. Now, if there's some kind of an arrangement that Mr. Mansfield can work out with him, maybe some sharing of costs, that really, I think, is up to Rick and Mr. Mansfield to work out. And I don't think it really, unless this board, you know, feels that it's a major issue, I feel confident that it can be worked out, but I just want to make sure it's clear that the fire chief has quite a bit of authority under the RSAs for life safety. Bob, you're a volunteer fireman, and I'm sure you can attest to that.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I understand that. My question is more, is more, are you going to take the hydrant right out of it? Are you, do you think, do you think you'll get a driveway permit? I mean, this is kind of a moot discussion if you can't get a driveway permit.
Right.
I think the intent was that if he agreed that he would move the fire hydrant, then he would grant a driveway permit. But I didn't know enough about the situation to ask that specific question when I saw him. But I don't see why he would even have a discussion with me about, yeah, about potential cost impact and how it would be done, and even the consideration of the incorrect installation of the fire hydrant that didn't meet a standard. But yes, I would have to go back and ask a very specific point of question, that if we relocate this fire hydrant, will a driveway permit be granted?
And that...
Okay.
My last discussion with Rick, and I have an email I can send it, was what he said to me, that it must be moved before the driveway permit, and he also has that authority as the fire chief.
So, are you saying he would grant the permit?
No.
If the hydrant was moved?
Right, well, I don't know. He hasn't filed an application for the permit, because other considerations...
The town ordinance is, the town standards are fairly clear. It's one driveway per lot.
Yeah, but it's more than that, Bob. You have to look at the site distance, you have to look at the...
Oh, yeah.
There's a whole array of specifications that come into play. It's not just, it's not just, you know, there's a number of things. So, and we don't know, we haven't, he hasn't filed a permit, and Rick hasn't said that, yes, he would approve it if the hydrant was relocated. I think maybe we need to get more if clarification from Rick. I tried to put Mr. Mansfield in touch with Rick, so Rick could help clarify this for us before the meeting tonight, and I didn't hear back from him, so...
You know, he did come to my property this morning, and then we reviewed the situation, and he said, yes. He was very strong about, yes, I believe the fire hydrant should be relocated to a safer location. Now, we didn't think in terms of exact location and feet and distance.
And then who's going to pay for it? That's an expensive proposition, from what I understand.
Yeah, he said that it would not require any, you wouldn't have to tear up the street. It would only be the dirt on my, or the location on my property that would have to be cut into. But yeah, there would be some cost. And, you know, I'm not opposed to sharing some of this cost with the town if this whole proposal is approved. But I do think the existing issue will also have to be addressed if we do something. And that would be the responsibility of the town, that the fact that it was installed incorrectly.
I think we need to get a letter from Rick Malaski to clarify it.
I'm not sure that the driveway permit and relocation of the hydrant is, I mean, that's all going to come afterwards. I wouldn't break any ground for a building until I had both in hand. But, you know, what we're looking at doesn't necessarily hinge on the driveway permit. Is this a good use of the lot to achieve his ends? What's unique about the lot that requires this to be done? I think he's addressed those at a number of levels. He's listed an economic impact. He's listed the fact that, you know, it would be, you'd have to put a lot of fill in order to get it so it's consistent with the rest of the household. The roof lines don't match, so you can't just tie it off the existing household. So, does it make sense to put the garage there? In a lot of ways, it does. What do the others think? James, Steve, you got any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the discussion of the driveway, it's kind of, and it's going to sound harsh at the moment, but it's kind of like moot at the moment, right? Like, there's no impact of what we're doing right now. Is that correct?
That's the way I, that's the way I, that's the way I look at our role in this, is that there are other regulators that have authority over that, and if we grant them the relief they're asking, they're going to have to go through that permit process to get that addressed, and that's at their risk.
Okay, so, yeah.
Am I correct with that Diane?
Say it again.
Am I correct with that Diane?
I would say so, sir, yes. But he still has to address the issue, one way or the other.
So, is the best approach to this issue is actually to file a permit? Or should it be an email or a letter from Rick saying that, based on what I've seen, it should move to this location, and we should address the issue with the standpipe being too high out of the ground at that time? If those criteria are met, then he would approve a permit? Or is it better to go for the permit and have that discussion for the application?
You're going to catch 22 right now, is what it is. If I were Rick looking at this, and you came to me and said, "I want a driveway permit," and you haven't got a variance to allow to put a building there, then I'd just say, "Heh, I'm not dealing with this." There's no point in it, you can't put a building there. So, we've got to either grant...
But you could put in a driveway without a building.
You can?
Just to put a driveway in, so...
Charlie has a driveway.
No, a second driveway.
Drive-in permit.
Again, there's a question on that too, whether you can have two driveways that Rick raised.
Well, that's not our...
No, it isn't. I agree with that. However, I'm just looking at, it would be negligent on this board's part to not point out the fact that he could potentially have a problem getting a second driveway.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying.
And that's why I think in order to push this to where he's going to be at, he's going to have permission to encroach into the offset and to build a building, then he's going to go through the process of getting a building permit and getting a driveway. And the fire hydrant and everything else is going to be addressed at that point, and then he's going to have to make a decision whether it's economically viable.
That's right, that's right.
So, can I ask you a quick question then?
Absolutely.
All right, so if that's the case, then, so I... Diane, you might have to answer this. Is there a way that we can table until that is figured out? Or is that, I mean, I don't want it to be a grant, I don't want there to be a vote of, yes, we approve or disapprove, because that doesn't, I don't think that's fair.
It could be a conditional approval, subject to him getting a highway access permit that meets the requirements of the Public Works Director.
I don't have a problem approving or acting upon the garage location without the driveway permit. My sole purpose is just to, you're going through this whole process, and I think you should get a driveway permit before you, and you know you have access to that building that you want to build. That's my whole point in this. I don't have a problem with granting you one, and then you going after it afterwards. I wouldn't do it that way, I guess. That's, I'd get my driveway permit and make sure I have access before I... And I agree, I wouldn't move a shovel of dirt until...
He would probably still have to, he would probably still have to come before us, because I believe the driveway would be in the side offset anyway.
Correct.
Right, but the board could act on the application tonight with the condition.
Yeah, we can act on it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I just, maybe I'm open to my mouth and I shouldn't be, but...
No, you're absolutely right. There are options available. But we've got a situation for us where he's asking for a variance to put that in, he's not asking for a variance. And he may be putting the cart before the horse. Rick may tell him that it ain't happening.
So, can I throw a motion for the, so I move to conditionally approve this application with the, Diane, help me out with the wording, so with the...
The application for the, first of all, make a finding that it meets the criteria for a variance, and approve the variance, subject to the Public Works Director issuing a driveway permit for the proposal and shown on the plan by Mr. Mansfield.
Yeah, so I do that. I want that as a motion. So, when Sue's taking notes, yeah, what Diane just said.
I can work with the language.
So, you're, basically, for everybody out there, he's making a motion that says it meets the criteria for the variance, and that he's making a motion to approve the variance with the condition that he get the necessary permits from Public Works. And that if it doesn't, if it doesn't come through that way, then the variance is moot. Is the fire hydrant, should the fire hydrant be part of that? It's all going to be part of that when it gets to Rick.
And it could be that they reach some kind of settlement and a cost arrangement, whatever that may be.
Yeah, and that's all part of that conditional, right? Yeah, okay.
But it's up to Rick to issue that permit and be happy with the location and how it is resolved, his jurisdiction.
Yep.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Al, seconds. We'll go down through, Al?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll vote aye also, so, all unanimous.
Was that an aye, Steve? I didn't hear you. Was that an aye?
No, it was an um, but I'll vote an aye too.
Oh, so we jumped ahead. Sorry, Steve.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Very good.
So, Jason, do you have, you need to have in order to proceed then? Like, do you know what your next steps are?
Um, not exactly.
Okay, who, Diane, who would be the best person that you can work with?
What we will do, Jason, is we will send you a notice of decision from the board indicating the variance has been granted, subject to the condition. We will make sure that Mr. Malaski gets a copy of that letter, and then it would be up to you and he to work that up, knowing you'll forward with the driveway in the setback until such time as you have your highway access permit worked out.
Okay, okay, thank you. That makes sense.
You're welcome.
I might drop you for questions, but I appreciate all your...
We'll try our best.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck, Jason.
I don't think we made your life any easier.
I just, Jason did an excellent job on his application. I wanted to mention that. I thought it was very well presented. Good pictures, photographs, plot plans. I want everybody to put together a plan, so easy to understand. Thank you.
Well, as the great Bill Ballbaggins said, "Third time pays for all."
All right, sounds good.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm going to leave now.
Good night, Jason. Good night.
All right. Couple of things. Sue asked me to try and get some input on the October 5th meeting where we had all the audio problems. Basically, it's who made the motion to continue and who seconded it.
I think I moved it. I'm almost positive.
That's what I thought, too. That's the way I'd written it up on my end of things, and I thought Steve had seconded the motion. But I'm not positive about that.
I believe that's correct, yes.
And basically, the way I'm going to write it up for Sue is that there was really no business it could be transacted, because we couldn't get on the same audio level. So, we really didn't get anything out of it.
Yeah, there was really nothing worthwhile in actual content.
Yeah, there was no substantive discussion about the applications that I remember.
There was a lot of, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I think the only thing I got out of that whole meeting was the size of the, uh, the building on, uh, at Morelli, at Dean's property. The 110 square feet and the 1100. That's all I remember.
And I was having trouble getting myself oriented 'cause you're, you're muted Diane. Alright, uh-
I was just gonna say, I couldn't hear anything. There was this shrill noise and feedback and it was really annoying and confusing.
That's funny. I went back to, on the New Market Facebook page, I went back to see what were they talking about online? I went back, it's like, "Oh yeah, that does sound terrible, okay."
It was funny 'cause Sue asked me, "Well, who made the motion and who made the-" "I don't know." 'Cause I, it went completely by me and it wasn't until Steve called me and said, "Well, by the way, they discontinued it." I had no idea. So, thank you Steve for following up on that. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. So, with that being said, we've conducted the business we can conduct tonight, so let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Al, you have a motion on the floor. Adjourn, yes, no?
Yes.
Yes. Wayne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
James?
E- yes, aye.
Yes and aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay.
Goodnight everyone.